... United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So basically that was two meetings.
So we have two meetings this evening. Technically, we have our reorg meeting as well as our regular, regular business meeting. So the reorg agenda and the mayor's appointments, A through E, is available online, but may I have a motion to approve the reorg agenda?
Action. Mayor, just to make the adjustments that you have amended agenda, your amended agenda reflects that trustee Rocco will be the representative of the DEP and that Vicki Ganskin will become the new chair to the reorg officials. And also, if you'll consider adding to our reorganization agenda, the resolution from the workday schedule and the resolution that names Nancy Branko as the supervisor to the clerk's office and also the office manager.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so moving on to public comments.
I could just explain one thing to the public so they understand what the reorg is. Just so the public is aware, the purpose, the village's fiscal year and the village's governing year with appointments is from June 1st to May 31st of each year. So the certain appointments have to be made annually. Every year, the village board is required to make certain annual appointments, representatives to different committees, chairman of various boards, chair people of various boards, appoint professionals, council engineers, so forth. And many of these appointments are full board appointments, many of them are mayoral appointments. And their mayoral appointments were subject, which are subject to the approval of the village board, and they must be done every year. That's the purpose. This being the first meeting in June, the first regular meeting, is why at this point, and at this point in time, the mayor has made his appointments and the village board has made their appointments and have been consented to with these changes that you heard by the board. And as the clerk said and as the mayor said, they are all available online rather than sitting here and going through numerous pages of appointments. They are all available to the public for inspection. Thank you, Mayor.
So may I have a motion to close the reorg meeting?
Second.
Motion to open the business meeting. Oh, sorry, so all in favor of closing?
Aye. With one absent.
Actually, what, Don? John has specific language with... Don Kerr requested that his attendance be noted as excused, as he had planned a trip even long before he ran for office. He's out of the country, so he's excused. The mayor's floor about that.
Okay, so now we are opening our business meeting. And do we take attendance?
No, I mean no.
So we're going to change the order of this agenda too, to reflect that the folks from the fire department are here because we have a resolution related to the fire department. So we're going to move that to the first thing on our business agenda after, so that is number 10, and that will be moved right after public comment.
Mr. Mayor? Also considering adding at the table the local law prohibiting formula businesses? If you'd like to add that as discussion?
Right, so we will, as a discussion topic, we're going to add the proposed legislation regarding formula businesses. And we can add that to the end of this agenda as the final item. So all in favor of these proposed changes? Or so someone might make a motion to accept the changes. I'm moving to add these changes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda approved, designated.
So that's four zero with one excused. So let's move to public comment. Public comment is...
Ellen Rocco, and I just want to say that having walked in the door and greeted by two really nice baskets of flowers, I really would like to thank, however that happened, and I believe that... That's it.
Thanks. Dr. Benjamin?
Congratulations on the election outcome, and I wish you a good luck if you proceed to serve the community. I made a comment on the website, and one of my neighbors asked me to read it, so I'm going to read my comment before I even post the proposal. I've lived in Prospect Street for almost 30 years and regularly drive from railway buses to business and for personal use. I am dependent on the bus service, I approve of the bus service, and I'm a frequent user of the public service. Additionally, I've advocated for public transportation as an elected official, and I support the creation of the county bus service and understand its needs and its services. While this notwithstanding, this might be the station's expansion, and the current location is not in the interest of our neighborhood as a board of community. And I think it was misrepresentation of the press that indicated there was broad consensus on this matter. Our streets has passed through a period of major generational change, many young families have moved in, some of whom are representing the neighborhood. Progresses have been improved at considerable cost of money, and that the neighbors, our social friends, have routinely helped each other during the course of their life. Children, some of whom are here, wait for the school bus, play outside, cross the street to visit each other continuously, and in general, live in a new community, including their habit of greeting when I go to work. I fear the consequences for their safety and therefore the willingness of my neighbors to remain resident on my street if the bus station is expanded, as it is. Moreover, in a town in which many single-family homes have been converted to rooming houses with students, with attendant challenges daily effects on life, the presence of these, including beer bottles regularly on my lawn, rockets, and behavior outside my window three to n... The presence of these families assures the fundamental home-owning character, residential character, of our neighborhood and our village. An expanded bus station at the foot of our street or a major parking lot would likely ruin the family residential character of our street and further seriously damage the essential character of our already challenged community. I would prefer improvement of the station at its current location within the existing footprint to order an alternative location already identified within the walking distance, within walking distance of the village board, but more suited to this business use set with land available for parking already developed. Alternatively, bus company customers who require parking might be accommodated by expansion of the three-way park and ride facility, perhaps with an overnight aid parking option. Those who don't know the buses, they may not understand that it stops in two or three places in the village, in the community, one in the village, one in the campus, and one in the parking lot, with ample parking, and many people who may take that option at the parking lot. So for the reasons I indicated and others that other will speak about this evening, I urge that you find an alternative location to our, bottom of our street for the bus station or support it, so it's improved in your current location without expanding the size of the parking lot. Thank you.
I just gave Katie the wrong news. Sorry. This is...
I'd actually like to say something first. Our practice, I feel that this board will be not to address individual comments, but instead of addressing Dr. Benjamin's comment specifically, I don't mind making a broad comment about this topic, having read the various letters from the Prospect Street residents in the newspaper, as well as received several letters and emails, having met with several individuals who are from that neighborhood. So I take your concerns very seriously, and I'm speaking as one-fifth of the village board. And I can share with you that I have a meeting with county planner Dennis Doyle on Monday. I have already spoken with him on the phone about this, and I take your concerns very seriously. And I think unfortunately, this process can be convoluted and confusing sometimes when words like "final draft" are used, when plans are essentially concepts that are being considered. So I just wanted to share that with the group and reinforce that there, nothing has been determined, there are no final plans. I serious, I'm taking all of the neighbors from Prospect Street, their concerns very seriously, and the intention is to work hard to figure out a solution that our community is comfortable with, including the residents from Prospect Street. So I wanted to share that with you, if you feel like your comments may be echoing what Dr. Benjamin has already brought up, or if I've addressed anything with what I've just said, just wanted to share that with you as we continue public comment.
If I could add to that also, while it was folks from the county who basically conducted the meeting and provided the information, it's not up to them as to what the final decision is. It's up to the village and the community. It's not up to the county. So just, you know, with the information they're putting out, that is, they do not have a final say.
And I would like to encourage everyone, as there are upcoming meetings with the county, please participate, please share your concerns, share what you think would make the most sense as far as an intermodal transportation hub for our community. I think it's important that folks have been engaged thus far, and I would encourage folks to continue to stay engaged. Brazel?
Thank you for saying that, Tim, especially that when you see the word "final draft", it kind of scary. So thank you for saying that. Okay, the current bus depot at Prospect and Main Streets, which services Trailways buses only, does not need to be expanded. I passed by foot several times today and have done this for seven years. Whatever growth there might be in the number of bus riders has appeared manageable over these seven years. Except for the short parades like this past Sunday, the current station looks like it's working just fine. Leaving it as it is, residents can continue to walk, or those driving can park on the street or park at the thruway. To expand at the current location would require, one, more parking spaces promoting more traffic on Main Street, and, two, a building being demolished to make room for a new and larger bus terminal. The jurisdiction for Ulster County Area Transit, that's UCAT, and Ulster County Transportation Council, UCTC, is the whole of Ulster County. There is so much potential planning, including reaching the disabled, elderly, and more rural populations all over the county, and maybe a bus expansion in our New Paltz will not be on their agenda. The main complaint I hear about the current bus station is there is not enough parking. This bus expansion got me thinking about the real part of the matter. New Paltz has a parking problem. SUNY New Paltz keeps eliminating parking spots on the campus, students in dorms and those in the walk-campus housing part on our streets. Downtown business owners are starved for parking. This is just my thought, I think they believe additional parking created on Main Street to serve the bus expansion is an answer to their prayers. SUNY New Paltz and the downtown business owners need to probably possibly build their own parking garages, which by the way, will have the smallest footprint. No matter how the issue of the bus expansion evolves, I think we can use this as an opportunity to look for alternatives to solve the parking problems. And to come back full circle, lack of parking was a main complaint about the current bus station. Before we jump into this expansion, this is an opening to explore other options around this lack of parking.
For the government, I'm just in Village Gardens, and this problem is not just to shoot Prospect Street, but it also affects all of us in Village Gardens as the proposed parking is in our backyard. I'm strongly opposed to it. We use 123 Main Street as they were suggesting to expand the parking area. Currently, not an approved parking lot. Parking area is landlocked and bordered from residential neighborhoods. It has never been approved by any planning or village board in New Paltz for multiple reasons, including the noise, light, and air pollution nuisance factors. I and my neighbors have been woken up regularly by people in the parking area coming out of bars at all hours of the night. There is no sound or light barrier between parking and our backyards. For the board to legalize its use is unacceptable, as it already has serious negatively impacted my quality of life and that of my neighbors. I have car lights coming into my bedroom windows, and I'm unable to keep my windows open in nice weather due to the noise and lights in the parking area. Add to that the amount of car exhaust coming into our homes, and it becomes a health risk to all. The current proposed plan will create traffic chaos and pedestrian safety traffic. Additionally, the current idea of egress lane onto Prospect Street is unrealistic, as I believe. Prospect Street is a residential street, and the body design that creates serious safety issues for the children, as well as negatively impact quality of life for neighbors on Prospect Street, is not in keeping with the concept of separate residential and commercial zones. Commuters already have a place to park their cars at the Route 32 parking lot and at the thruway. They can get picked up by bus there. If a new station is indeed necessary, then moving the new bus station is a choice that we have. The 32 corridor is in a business district and has been seeking business development, so everyone wins.
My name is Stephen Cook from Prospect Street. Greetings to our mayor and village trustees, and thank you for those who spoke. I think that there are a lot of us here who are very, very concerned that there's a lack of information, and I think for residents of the area, and that's not just Prospect Street, that's Grove Street, John Street, Slate and Turtle, and just there are a lot of other people who would be affected by this. So this is the issue of expanding Trailways Bus Station. While residents around the area generally support bus service as provided, we really are against expanding the facilities and creating what is probably needless additional parking for cars and buses at the station, destroying the apartment building and that plan that houses a dozen residents. And in this scenario, two minutes won't do much for this topic. And by the way, I live right next door. If that house, the apartment building, were torn down to expand bus station, the bus station would be next door to me. And that, nothing like realization like that to focus the mind. There's a need for parking in this, in New Paltz, but that really should be a discussion that the village and the town have, rather than the county coming in with eminent, divine plans. There really is no need for, as this plan does, to saddle Prospect Street with additional traffic. Although I've done some research and found a couple of targeted transportation studies from 2009 to 2011, there are almost, at that point in 2011, there were almost 1,200 cars per day on Prospect Street, and the idea of adding increased cars and increased buses is just too much really for the street to handle. Many years ago, on the south end of the street, there was a sign that was erected that says "No Through Trucks or Buses." And I'm not sure that reason that was placed there is probably lost in history time, but I think whoever did place it there, whatever department, whatever village, whoever looked at that, saw that the bus station would draw people. There's a lot of traffic on Prospect right now, and I think that that sign in the case ruled that Prospect does a lot already, and really does not need more traffic. We understand there's money to fund something, there's money from the state, there might be money from the county, there's a grant, and I think we all see how tempting that can be, but the hundreds of residents who are directly affected by this scenario really ask you to represent them. I mentioned that, you need the help of the zoning board, the planning board, the village board, and the mayor to help us. Thank you.
So again, if anyone feels like their comment has already been said, I welcome you to stand up and say, the person who spoke earlier, I agree with them, but we're very much on board with the points that you're making.
Thank you. Nevertheless, although I agree with Stephen Cook and other neighbors who are here, who I've got to know because of this issue, and others that I always get friends with beforehand, I keep mine to two minutes exactly. Hi. One of the unique charms of the village of New Paltz is its proportionality, where the blessings of living in close proximity to lovely neighbors and locally owned businesses are seldom overshadowed by the noise, pollution, traffic, and concomitant evils that threaten other, less fortunately balanced locales. This balance, this quality of life, and especially this safety, are endangered with this supposedly favored plan to expand out of all proportion the New Paltz bus terminal at its current site. In the course of many conversations with people who are familiar with New Paltz and its perennial traffic issues, I haven't met anyone who thinks this plan is a good idea, and certainly not any of the numerous property owners and families with young children who live on Prospect Street. None of our views were solicited or considered in drawing up, presumably at some expense, two proposals for expansion at Prospect and Main, but all of us recognize what a drastic impact either plan would have on our sizable, yet post-it neighborhood. One fatal problem with the option of expansion in Sactu is that in both alternatives, such a metastasis would require increased traffic along Prospect Street, a street whose pedestrian safety must be paramount, whether for young children chasing balls and riding bikes and scooters, for adult neighbors jogging or walking their dogs, or for college-age renters walking to class or returning home at night from local bars on foot, occasionally obliviously intoxicated. Adding traffic to this lovely village street, either from buses or automobiles and emptying onto Prospect from the vacant lot behind the Sidco station, which would be transformed into a parking lot with more than 100 spaces to serve the bus station, is a dangerously bad idea. Prospect Street is sensibly designated a no-through street to trucks and buses for safety reasons, and those are the same reasons that a 100-car garage serving bar patrons at night and emptying onto Prospect Street would be disastrous. The bus station at its present size is a really good neighbor. I suspect that someone may be trying to solve the village's parking shortage using federal grant money earmarked for genuine transportation issues to build a parking garage in the hardened village, but perhaps we actually need a huge new bus station, 40,000 square feet with a base of 6 buses. Really? If so, I hope the new parking lot site on return to a casual story along former STS parking might be reconsidered. And my husband's been there tonight, so my son has agreed to read his letter.
Do you want to state your name?
Sorry, June Wheeler. Could I just, oh, sorry, may I? I'm sorry. I do need time, but may he read my husband's letter?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Dear village board, I read with dismay a recent story in the New Paltz Times detailing expansion plans for the bus station on Main and Prospect Street. The article characterized that among the very small group of a dozen or more attendees, there was a favorable option on expanding the existing station at the current location while adding a parking facility in a vacant lot nearby. Unfortunately, many residents of the impacted neighborhood who are raising families in the neighborhood were unable to attend that meeting due to helping the kids with homework, making dinner, washing dishes, putting the little ones to bed, and more. Upon reading the article, I can say with certainty that the expansion at the current location on the scale outlined would be highly destructive to the neighborhood surrounding the station. For one, this expansion plan does not take into account the number of children living in the area who are the future of New Paltz, which does not take into account the increase in air and noise pollution that would most definitely impact the area. It does not answer the ongoing debate about the traffic problems confronting the village, but rather would only add to the existing nightmare. It does nothing to ease the congestion along Main Street, in fact, much more while creating yet another bottleneck. The streets near and surrounding the bus station are full of families, which is becoming a rarity in the village. These families are not sansits, but have made New Paltz their full-time home. At present, Prospect Street is a drag strip where cars constantly speed down the block, where buses and trucks routinely use the street despite it being a no-through street that fast trucks and buses, where drunk patrons at nearby bars walk freely down the street in the middle of the night, loudly talking, arguing, cursing, urinating, vandalizing, trespassing, littering, littering, etc. This is all taking place on a street that is home for dozens of kids who deserve a neighborhood where they can play with their friends and grow up into their side, come to the leaders to this community. To add a structure and facility as described would ruin an important component not measured in traffic statistics, analysts, or research. It would ruin the very character of a family neighborhood that is dedicated to the community. Perhaps a better course of action is to locate the station along the Chestnut Street corridor, a blighted area so often discussed since there is already a parking lot facility and a vacant lot large enough to support the park. Failing that option, the three-way parking lot has plenty of room to fit the bill. Both of these options would be far less cost, be far less disruptive in the area. Either alternative is really not that particularly unreachable and difficult for the struggling UCAT system with proper implementation. To advise or alter the corner of Prospect and Main is in many ways a tipping point for further decline in the quality of my family's vision. William Murray.
That's my husband, William Murray.
Well done. But we need, we need the gentleman's name, who read the letter.
Sorry.
The gentleman who read the letter, his name?
This is Henry. Henry Wheeler.
Well done, Henry.
Good job, Henry.
Go ahead. Please state your name.
Christina Cox, UCATRC. The land behind Grove Stores and 123 Main Streets, he considers as a site for the proposed trailways expansion. As a resident of the Orchard Heights Condos located directly behind this area, I'd like to share my concerns with this option and to encourage you to revisit the STS tire and adjacent parking lot companies located on Chestnut Street, New York 32, as an alternative set. Previous development options for the area behind 123 Main Street experience opposition from Prospect Street families and people living at Orchard Heights for some reasons, including those mentioned, air pollution from diesel buses or gas-powered vehicles, noise pollution from vehicles, increased levels of usage activity, light pollution from vehicle headlights, illuminations of buildings, parking lots. Additionally, with the proposed trailways expansion behind 123 Main Street, I have a lot of concerns. Due to the compromised site lines generated by parked cars along Main Street and the frequently heavy pedestrian foot traffic, ingress into the proposed parking area requires caution and an unnecessary degree of risk to drivers entering the parking area and pedestrians walking along the sidewalk. The additional length of a transit bus will increase this level of difficulty, and the heightened amount of ingressing vehicles will increase the level of risk. Downtown New Paltz derives much of its charm, its popularity, through its unique topography, the distinctive aesthetic provided by the historic buildings and varied businesses lining Main Street. Why denude and interrupt the shopping and dining experience for visitors, for residents, and students with the noise and fumes of buses and cars ingressing into the parking lot when an alternative is available? We understand it is important to keep trailways as a local business that can be accessed by SUNY students, visitors, and residents. We are, however, concerned that the STS tire and adjacent parking lot option is being dismissed as being too far for SUNY students. In order to get to trailways from the SUNY campus, students presumably cut through the campus and exit near Old Main building at South Oakwood Terrace and Park. campus and exit near Old Main building at South Oakwood Terrace and Platteville Avenue, and head along South Oakwood Terrace to reach the bus station, while walking approximately eight minutes from the old Main exit point. If trailways is moved to the STS Tire and adjacent parking ride location, the walk time is increased to approximately 20 to 23 minutes. Although a longer walk, it is easily navigable for most of the young energetic students who live on the SUNY campus. Many SUNY students do not live on the SUNY campus. A large student population lives along and off Church Street, and it is an easy walk for them to get into town or to get to the parking lot. We know this because they take shortcuts to our property on a daily basis and are quite capable of sprinting quickly to finals meetings with friends and friends. We encourage you to reconsider the STS Tire and adjacent parking ride location option for the following reasons. Commercial industrial buildings already exist along this area of the New York 32 corridor. The closest residential area is buffered by both the Walco Valley rail trail and a green forest district. It is an open and readily accessible area to pedestrians, to buses, and cars alike, which increases the safety factor for all. Pedestrian traffic in this area is not dedicated to browsing or looking for a restaurant. Instead, it is dedicated to accessing the few spread-out commercial locations in this area. There are no parked cars along Route 32 to inhibit sightlines. It's an easy flat walk into downtown New Paltz for residents and visitors. I do not want our quality of daily life to be compromised by a location that also affects the caliber of the downtown experience for visitors, students, and residents, and introduces increased safety risks. Instead, I implore you to consider the STS Tire and adjacent parking ride properties as an excellent solution, in my opinion, to the expansion of trailways. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. All your knowledge.
Go ahead.
My name is Nina Ross. I live on Millbrook Terrace, and I just wanted to speak as someone who does not live on Prospect Street or adjacent to the proposed expansion, just to let you know that many of us in the community are opposed to the expansion of the current location for all the reasons that have been listed. Just thinking about the future of our village and town and the opportunity, if the bus station is moved to Route 32, of that real estate there being a park or being more retail, that's more conducive to kind of walking and shopping and being part of the community that we so treasure. So I just wanted you to know, it's not only a Prospect Street issue. I support my neighbors in Prospect Street, but I also want you to know that others in the community also think it's a really bad idea. And I bring two letters from people who couldn't be here, also who do not live on Prospect Street, who do not support the Prospect Street location. Thank you.
Thanks. Go ahead.
My name is Asia Whitney. I live on Prospect Street, and I live in the two-family house that Stephen Hook mentioned, where my bedroom window, our bedroom window, would be the bus station if it was to expand. I'm not thrilled about that, and I'm representing the renters in New Paltz and in Prospect Street. I'm a longtime resident of the Village of New Paltz. I find the plan for the bus station expansion ridiculous, not well thought out, and intrusive, and completely unnecessary. My significant other and I are renters on Prospect and hopefully one day future homeowners of New Paltz. We specifically sought out to live on Prospect Street and in that neighborhood. I work in Woodstock, who works and goes to University of Newburgh. We've been doing the commute for years. We can easily find housing in Kingston or Caxipsey or Woodstock, but we choose to live in New Paltz. There's no need to disrupt a family-oriented, lovely, peaceful village neighborhood with traffic and a parking lot that's completely unnecessary, especially when there's a perfectly suitable spot that's already paved on a major thoroughfare between, as I mentioned, the STS parking lot on Route 32. This plan must be extinguished towards coming to New Paltz to get away from all of that parking lot, mass transportation congestion, and I ask you not to ruin the aesthetic integrity and peace of the incredible Hudson Valley community. I conclude with a quote from my beloved Joey Mitchell, too. Don't always seem to go, that you don't know what you got till it's gone. They pave paradise and they put up a parking lot. Please maintain our peace of paradise on Prospect.
I just want to say a couple of things. I wasn't prepared to speak at all. I didn't even realize you guys were going to be here talking about the bus station proposed expansion. But I really think that there's a, that the situation is still quite open, as Tim said. There's a lot more we can talk about. There could be expansion without the parking lot, there can be less expansion, there can be only four buses at that site, et cetera. But the reason I feel I need to say something is that I live up of Yugenon Street behind Route 32 where STS was, and although we're not quite as organized, many of the neighbors who live behind the rail trail are concerned that even though we have a buffer, that the impact of a large bus station and the terminal at that site would incorporate six buses, not four, in the promotional, that the expansion at that site would affect us, and not just us, but, I mean, Yugenon Street and the rail trail are places that, you know, our community is very proud of. People come from all over to enjoy it. It's one of the gateways to start Yugenon Street. So of course, we have similar concerns about noise and air and light pollution as well. So there has to be a lot more conversation about this.
Completely agree.
My name's Alotta Wett, and I've, my husband has lived here since 1947, and I arrived in 1959, so I'm an old timer. I have lived in, I have been a village landowner, a village landowner, a house owner, since 1967, and I have lived on Prospect Street since 1978. I have seen incredible changes in traffic patterns and the continued escalation of traffic congestion. We all know what that is. The college continues to expand, and our village and the surrounding area continues to grow, because we are bedroom communities. It has become a bedroom community, not only to Albany, but also New York City. On bus on, Ruth, last week, I went out and counted 32 cars that magically disappeared when the buses came into New York. Now, that's an ongoing thing. I've also seen buses trying to turn very tightly during heavily trafficked times, especially on the weekends when they've got two buses going into New York or out of New York or up to Albany. If it wasn't so dangerous, it would be comical, and I watched it, and one bus could not make the turn. I had to find somebody to move their car so the bus could be made, so it could be turned, because the buses are also getting much larger. We've already, everybody knows about Prospect Street. Tree-lined, residential, family-owned, children having lemonade stands, and also a jewelry concession, which I absolutely love. What happens is, last week, I have, I also go to New York consistently. Last week, when I was on the bus, I stopped and interviewed all of the buses, drivers coming and going while I was waiting, and also in New York City. None of them know that there's a possibility, which I, which raised the question, why are not the men in, or men and women who are driving the buses not part of the process? And I said, I go, gave them the three sections that we have, and they said, wow, these things would be down under Route 32, major thoroughfare, et cetera. Anyway, with all due respect, this is a very, very complicated and complex with lots of parts. I've already had the occasion to speak with Mr. Doyle and Mr. Slapp from the Commission. They are very, very knowledgeable. It's a very complicated decision, and just listening to the cut lines is not going to solve it. We have to solve it for the next decade. When this decide, when this gets done, we have to think about larger college population. We have to think of a larger community, because we have lots of land outside of the village that still can be developed, that will impact on the village. And so we really have to work together as a community and as a group organization. I'm ready, I'm willing to help, because I really just want it solved once and for all so that we can all keep residential streets residential, thoroughfare streets thoroughfare. One of the ones that I, that we have to look at very carefully, and that's the Boys Drive. I've lived here long enough to remember streets, the argument for an alternative east-west access road, when they closed off the other ones, when the college expanded. If you go back into the archives, you'll see it. Anyway, I've been there, done that, I've heard it all, and I'm just willing to help. But we have to do it together. We really have to do it together.
Great. And before we jump onto the next public comment, I think it's, I think a great idea as far as being communicative with the folks here, is we can make a concerted effort when there are the next organizational meetings or discussions with the county about this project. Our village government can do, make an extra effort to make sure that's communicated with everyone who sent us emails about their concerns and posted.
And they know our concerns. The Commission knows our concerns, they really do. But it's not, it's not.
Well, yeah, I think it is not just about the concerns, it's about harnessing the community's awareness of what should work better as far as a solution for this transportation.
And we're not going to be able to solve everybody, we're not going to make everybody happy, but we have to.
Okay, Allison?
So I kept like to two minutes, and I'm not going to read all of it, because how many of my points were made, but I want to read some of it. While many Prospect residents appreciate having the current bus station on our horn, as you have heard, all are opposed to the expansion plan. The project is simply too big for the location, too intrusive in terms of traffic, noise, and lights for a residential neighborhood, and for what purpose, it's hard to justify. According to the May 7th presentation of the Intermodal Feasibility Study, the pros of the current location, walkability, were outweighed by the cons, lack of parking, traffic backups along Main Street, and difficult left turns getting out. Yet the plans for improvement of this site only address the parking problem. The other limitations remain. In fact, the proposed 100-car parking lot will make the situation worse, as the egress for the bus station and the parking lot converge at the same place on Prospect Street. Additionally, the difficulty of getting into Main, onto Main Street will lead exiting cars to drive north on Prospect, causing massive congestion on residential street. A particular concern is the effect on many neighborhood children, many of who are here, and I'm not going to read that paragraph, because you've heard about that. Finally, if the Prospect Plan was deemed a dear favorite because of its walkability, then why is it necessary to create a huge parking lot nearby, especially as we already have a large parking area for commuters at the three-way parking lot? If indeed more parking is needed, expansion of this lot could be explored. Even though, as we've heard, other options eventually will be considered, at this point, the Prospect Street plan is the only one currently on the table. This is why we're here tonight. We urge you to stop moving forward on an option that is clearly not supported by residents as it causes more problems than it solves.
Okay, sir?
Hey, my name is Kathy. I live on Prospect Street. I want to read this on behalf of Christine. I mean, most of the points are already made, but it must be made clear that it's a serious issue, and it doesn't matter how many times you repeat it, if it's not robust, it'll have a base in science. I'm just going to choose a paragraph here, which said, after speaking to Mayor Rogers last week, he stated that if only 7% of Prospect Street neighborhood was against this project, the rest were in favor of it, and that 7% would, tactically, be majority. Those words are a relief to us, and we are here to let you know that we are not 7%, but close to 100.
Anyone else for a public comment on this topic or any other topics?
I'm Peter Berry. I'm a homeowner on Prospect Street as well. I have kind of a unique perspective, because I actually drove the trailways. So I know how difficult it is to get a bus from Henry W. DuBois onto Prospect, and to get from Prospect onto Main Street. It's incredibly difficult, and anytime you have a left turn across the main traffic route, you're going to have major problems. And you don't have to be, you know, you don't have to be the most perceptive person on the planet to drive down Main Street when buses are trying to turn and see the problems that it causes. So, I mean, I think that's pretty well established. And I can also vouch for the fact that buses have gotten larger, because there's six inches on each side when you go through the tunnels. So, I mean, it's very, very tight. And I was there when a bus tried to turn onto Prospect this weekend during the parade, and that was, it was exactly what everybody else said, and I don't think I was there at the same time everyone else was, so this was going on all day, or a good chunk of a period of time when that, when that parade was going on. I mean, it was a three-point turn of the bus, you have no sightlines to the back, you know, it's ridiculous to try and turn a bus that way. So that's part of it. I also have gotten some perspective, because I've done a fair amount of traveling through Ithaca, I, my girlfriend's a planner. When she heard of this plan, she thought that it was one of the most ridiculous and poorly thought-out ways of transforming the center of what's really a rural town into something that is going to be unrecognizable. It's a regional transportation hub that's being proposed here. And to do that to the center of town, I think, I mean, you want a destination that people want to come to, not the transportation hub being the destination, and that's literally the core of the village. So, I mean, I don't, I don't dispute the fact that there may be, you know, reasonable proposals for development of that area, but a parking lot is not one that seems to be reasonable to me. And we could look to Ithaca, we could look to Saratoga Springs, where they've done a fair amount of work on traffic, and they have real traffic issues that mirror some of those that we have, and look at some of their solutions. I mean, they're, they've got some pretty enlightened planners, it might be worth looking at some other communities that are struggling with the same issues that we have, and, you know, consider what are, in a larger vision, you know, what are we trying to accomplish by putting in this, you know, this massive expansion to a transportation hub? And we want that transportation hub in the center of town. I mean, you know, there's been a lot of mention of 32, and I don't know, there may be other sites. 32, to me, is very logical, and again, I mean, I have a lot of experience, having spent a lot of time in the STS building, it burnt down, it used to be a bus garage, ironically. So, you know, maybe we should kind of stick to our historical roots.
Any other public comments? Go ahead.
A lot of what I've heard here today confirms what I thought beforehand. My name's David Hauer, and I'm a resident of New Paltz. I think one of the things is that with these, with these proposals, we want to make sure that there is a vision going forward that addresses not any one single set of concerns, but as many concerns as possible. And, but always, when looking at this project, keep in mind what you've heard here today, because these are real, real people whose lives are going to be very much impacted, and the board is entrusted with a sacred duty to represent us in these matters. And I was very encouraged to hear what Mayor Rogers said earlier about giving it thought, and I know that how these things can get turned around and with all kinds of concerns getting put in, but you really have to look at the effect on the town and on the people, and that has to be at the forefront of your thoughts the whole time through the process. Thank you very much.
Anyone else have a public comment?
Hi, my name's Peter McDuskin. I'm a homeowner and also a business owner at Seven Prospect, and I just wanted to kind of reiterate the 123 zone or area for a And I just wanted to kind of reiterate, the 123 zone or area for proposed parking has a really nefarious history. So I just want to bring, bring that back up. The road cut is really not large enough, and the original agreement was just be used by employees for those, those businesses. And as soon as that was permitted, it became an expansive parking lot. Now, everybody goes in there, it's for the bars, and it's not for the employees. The berm that was supposed to be built, maybe isn't high enough, doesn't.
Or non-existent.
Or non-existent. So there's a real nefarious history to that location. And then what, what happens? If you try to go in and not out of the one entrance in, you have to have, I guess, eminent domain. I don't know where the proposed outlet is. Would it come up, would you take away my barn? Would you go through other property? I don't know how you would get out of that parking lot. Okay? So anything going on in, in a lot behind my property is pretty suspect. And, you know, I have a lot of comments which have been echoed about the bus station, so I'm not going to reiterate those. But I just wanted to bring up the nefarious history on that property.
Okay. Anyone else, sir?
My name is Paul Hauer. I recently moved here. My background came from Europe. And I, I just wanted to observe that I became very adjusted to the American life, a driver one. But could not it be nice to try to change things so the places would become more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly? I mean, I don't even see sidewalks at certain places, you know, like Prospect Avenue further north, you know? So I would rather see that there should be some effort made to make things more pedestrian and possibly bicycle-friendly.
Thanks.
If anyone has a parable statement, if they want a candidate to, I can put it into the, as part of the record for the meeting.
Okay, any, anyone else, because.
Move on.
Close public comments. As people leave.
Motion that we're closing public comments?
Second.
Oh, we don't need a motion to close?
No.
So we'll move on, we'll give everyone a chance. If you want to stay for the meeting, please feel free to stay, otherwise. Thank you, thanks for being involved, Concerned Citizens. Okay, we're gonna.
Four to go. What about Katie?
Yeah, we need Katie.
Katie is helping. The hand is up.
Excellent.
Can I make a three-minute recess while Katie helps us with the handkerchief and everything? No? This is bad.
Jerry works.
Jerry works okay. Two rounds.
Yeah, and actually, I have a question for Katie. I'm not sure if this is a joint meeting, it's either the village or the town. So the next meeting will be the village 625, the next town meeting will be 625, and manage. And they were hoping that Katie and Katie that work on this project.
We can do.
You want to close that door? Pull the door shut. She walked out.
Yes, actually, she is.
We need her here because it's her resolution.
I have the consent agenda.
Oh, that's a good idea. So may I have a motion to pass the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's.
Do you agree to consent agenda?
Yes.
So four zero, one excused. Next item, resolution regarding fire districts as requested by Deputy Mayor Roßler. So we have a resolution here. Should we read it before we make a motion to discuss it?
Well, you would.
Yes, absolutely.
You would read the title of the resolution, just give a brief description of what it's about, and then if there's any discussion, that would be the time before voting. You don't need to read each word.
Absolutely. Okay, so this is a resolution, the title of the resolution, "Resolution of the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of New Paltz Requesting a Joint Meeting with the Town Board of the Town of New Paltz to Determine Whether a Proposal to Consider the Formation of a Joint District Is in the Public Interest of Joint Fire District." And in brief, this is, the title actually did a very good job of explaining what this resolution is about. It's, it's for the purposes of determining whether a fire district makes sense or is in the public interest. So we are suggesting a, a forthcoming meeting, whether it's a village meeting or a town meeting, but a joint meeting to discuss the concept. Do you want a motion to, someone want to?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
It's a roll call.
It's a roll call.
Oh, I see. Sorry. Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rata?
Aye.
Trustee Raka?
Aye.
Trustee Yon?
Aye. So next on the agenda are two interviews for, for, two individuals willing to volunteer on the Environmental Policy Commission. Seems like we have one of them here, Jackie Northacker. And so.
Don't see Noah.
And we don't see Noah, but I know that Noah is seriously interested in volunteering for this commission, so I guess we'll have to.
Reschedule him for the next one.
Reschedule an interview with him, but we can go into executive session for the purposes of interviewing this Northacker.
Need a motion?
We have to say it in executive session.
Means make a motion.
We have to do that in executive session.
I move that we go into executive session.
It's appropriate for interviewing people who are being considered for any type of appointment by the village board.
Yeah, we've.
When I was appointed in the same position, I did it right here, so we don't have to, but it's an option.
It's appropriate, so.
Based on perhaps questions that may come up that. Did somebody move to go into executive session?
Tom moved, Rebecca seconded in executive session.
As a researcher, you're going to have to take the oath of honor if, have you made a decision as you're coming up?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jackie Northacker.
Northacker.
Second.
You got it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So at your convenience, before the next meeting, you can stop by the clerk's office and I'll swear you the oath of honor.
Katie.
Downstairs.
Katie, also give Jackie copy of the Code of Ethics and so forth as a board member, so she's aware of any responsibilities. If any conflicts come up with an issue that comes before their commission, that she, you know, there may be a situation where she may have to step out or recuse herself from a particular issue.
Absolutely.
Pre-official?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for doing it.
I'm honored and privileged to serve my community.
We're happy.
So.
You'll get your decoder ring in the mail.
If you want.
I'm going to make dinner. Got to make dinner for the guy in the car. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on, next on our agenda is a resolution to approve the municipal planner, David Gilmore, to proceed with applying for funding under a 2015 Hudson River Estuary Program grant.
Make a motion to approve the resolution?
Second. Call him.
It's a roll call.
Roll call.
The way I do them is the way I do them with roll call.
The residents, we have done resolutions by law. Yeah.
Who's second? I'm sorry, Katie, who's second?
Oh, Dennis.
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
Raka?
Aye.
Yon?
Aye.
So the next topic, a discussion of the referral from the Village of New Paltz Planning Board on the interpretation of Chapter 212-13, spot G1B of the Village Code. And this is in relation to the establishment of a, oh, it's in regards to the North Chestnut B3 rezoned district. I actually wanted to combine Item 11 with 16 because they are related, and, and I feel like we will be addressing Number 11 if we have David comment on Item 16 right now. Do you want to come to the table and?
I can of course come to the table. My recollection from some of the business, I didn't see the referral, and I checked my notes. I wasn't sure if that was the question from the planning board regarding the site plan and standards that was enacted by the previous administration.
Well, my understanding from the planning board meeting that we attended was they were discussing this referral that they, they made to the village board, and the outcome of that discussion was this idea of a committee that would revisit the recently adopted legislation to potentially tweak it or modify it, and, or come up with some thoughts on what should be done from that committee. So I'll let you elaborate further.
So I'm David Gilmore. I think I've met most of you in one or the other form, and the municipal planner, thanks for your appointment provisionally this evening. As I understand it, the piece of business before you is the referral from the planning board on the 26th of May for 21213G1B. And it is my understanding that that's the, a standard that was enacted by local law, I believe it was Local Law Number 2 of 2015, regarding a threshold for all application coming before the board for site plan approval. And then if I'm correct to understand, Mayor Rogers, are you wanting to merge that also with Agenda Item 16?
You're talking about Agenda Item 12?
Correct.
No?
Eleven, eleven.
Just 11?
Just, just 11.
Did I misspeak before, did I say 12?
No, no.
No, I'm sorry if I got the numbering on the agenda wrong.
It's 11 and 16.
So 11 and 16.
11 and 16.
Yes.
And we'll discuss them separately, correct? Is your interest?
Together.
Together.
Yes.
Thank you.
Because I think by discussing 16, we're addressing 11. That's my understanding of the planning board's discussion last week.
And there was also discussion at the planning board, it's my understanding, predating the discussion last week on the Local Law Number 2 of 2015.
Absolutely, and that's why 11 was, was on the agenda.
So the, the, the planning, I started on, I think it was around the 18th of May, and that was, I believe, a Tuesday evening with a planning board meeting. And the planning board has had interest in redevelopment and development within the B3 zoning district, known in your text as the North Chestnut zoning district. And in terms of some of the context, the community has been working on development planning and standards within the B3 North Chestnut Route 32 North corridor, dating back a number of years, including in a 2006, 2000 study generated by BN Planning Associates of Saratoga, New York. There were some zoning changes that were executed circa 2014. There may be some predating changes, which, by the way, that BN study was never adopted, but it did very much inform a lot of the work that was done. And there were subsequently zoning change, so your, your district standards for B3 were adopted. And however, then in 2014, there were changes in the, in the district regulations and the schedule of uses in the text of the zoning law, such that it has been an interest of the planning board to understand some of the intent and purposes of this B3 zoning district around North Chestnut Street. The other item on the agenda related to that is that in Local Law Number 2 of 2015, it's my understanding that one of the standards adopted was a standard that was meant to be, in a sense, protective, is that the bulk of land development applications, the vast majority, except for maybe some, I think it's the bulk, actually, almost all land development applications, rehabilitation projects of residential uses, non-residential uses, new as well as rehab, come to the planning board for site plan review, and that law was adopted. It was, as I understand it, growth management. It was, as I understand it, growth management strategy taken based on some other developments that were processing within the community. So on that latter topic, I think that one of the process impacts is that there is, there are many different types of land use applications coming to the planning board. For instance, a proposal to replace, to a less, a less, a more, to replace a more conforming garage is coming to the planning board for site plan review. Some, what might be characterized as minor subdivisions are coming to the planning board for review, but...
Excuse me, we've now slipped, I think, into number 12.
I'm toggling between...
No, I think we've slipped into number 12.
No.
It's really toggling between a letter and 16.
Mine was the 16, I think we have, given my presence at all meetings, waiting for some weeks.
Okay.
Anyhow, sorry to interrupt you. If you haven't slipped into 12, I apologize.
And so it does say in 12 is language, I haven't looked into item 12 on the agenda. So I think, as I understand it, regarding the site plan threshold established in local law number two of 2015, if I'm correct to understand, the planning board's interested, could they receive some clarification from the village board? And I understand that you weren't all members of the village board at the time that local law was adopted, but some of the purpose and intent and expected performance of the site plan standard. On the topic of the B3 zone, it's the, the use schedule within our zoning regulation, forgive me, I should know the appendix number, I'm not sure if it's A, B, or C appendix of our zoning law, but also furthermore, the text of the zoning law in the B3 district is at times contradictory, and the planning board is interested in exploring the intent and purposes of that district and what it prescribes, what it provides for in terms of mixed use within the B3 district.
I think I can, I can add and succinctly clarify Michael Zeiler's comments as it relates to the new legislation regarding B3. I feel like Michael identified some looseness in that legislation that was probably unintended. And the, the board that, that passed that legislation in terms of creating a new district in B3, the intent was to encourage mixed use, retail down below, residential up above, and the planning board understood that and seemed to be supportive of it as well, but I think when they looked in detail at the code and the, the new legislation as it worked with the existing legislation, it just ended up being too broad. And the feeling is, and that's kind of gets back to this number 16 on our agenda, is to establish a committee to tighten up some of that code, and that may involve modifying this, this recently adopted code, or scrapping the code and rewriting it and adding new code. But I think that is basically what Michael Zeiler, planning board member, identified as something that needed to be done, and the planning board's response was to ask the village board to have a couple of members from the planning board, a couple of members from the village board, yourself to have a committee to look at this, and that's essentially what 16 is about.
To look at the B3 district, the question is to look at this again.
And I would like to make a motion that we move forward with, with establishing that committee.
Second.
I want to just...
Do you want to discuss?
Yeah. The objective of the committee is not just to look at it, but actually to make recommendations to this board for adjustments to the law. We're looking for changes in law.
Yes, potentially.
Potentially. Or in the case of contradictions, we know for sure. So the one clear contradictory reference that I can recall was the reference to one-family structures, when the code specifically addresses two fam- two-story structures in that district.
Yes.
And then there's a, there's a specific reference to a one-story structure, and I think that could be fixed in about eight seconds.
Got it.
But it needs to be fixed.
Yes, so that, that will be the mandate of this committee, or...
Right.
Are you going to designate specific members of the village board, or is it going to be an ad hoc thing? That's something you should probably establish with this motion, if you want to designate, or not.
Yeah.
Just throwing it out there.
I believe the, the intention was, and we can discuss this here, I was willing to volunteer to be part of that committee, and I think you were, Tom was being strong-armed into participating on that committee as well. Does, does anyone want to add anything?
It seems appropriate, given your planning background and Thomas, you've been a lady liaison of the planning board several years.
Did the planning board, I'm sorry, were you finished, Dennis? Did the planning board indicate which members they wanted to...
They did, I believe they were suggesting it would be Michael as well as Liz Harshaw.
Subject to them and confirming, Ben, you're good.
So it's be a five-member committee?
Yes, with, including Mr. Gilmore.
And I would note that those really wouldn't be subject to open meetings because it's not any particular board, so it's not a, with two for me, which is okay.
Okay.
Not that that matters.
Right. Well, with that, we could also, just in the interest of other members being able to attend as a member of an audience, we could also publish the dates of the meetings. And this way, you know, we're not in violation of the rules. We have a suggestion, you can say it's an ad hoc committee?
Yeah, it's an ad hoc committee, and, and I fully support and agree with Rebecca's suggestion that members of either board would be encouraged to attend. They don't necessarily need to deliberate, but are encouraged to attend and be aware of the discussions, because that can only be useful.
And of course, with that, the two members of the village board who are participating in this will, when warranted, report back to the entire village board.
Okay. So I believe we have a motion on the table.
I seconded.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done.
You did.
Now, moving on to number 12, discussion of referral from the Village of New Paltz CBA on language distinguishing commercial or residential property. So do I have a motion to discuss this?
No. It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
So moving right in, this came from a recommendation from the building department. We wanted to differentiate or more clearly differentiate within our code, commercial, identifying commercial properties versus residential properties, because it can be challenging in our code when we have properties that are essentially set up to be income-generative properties, which should be considered commercial, but then they can be considered residential. So the, the intention was to create a clearer distinction to help both the building department and help our planning board and CBA when they're, when they're reviewing applications. I think this is a valuable suggestion, and I'm in favor of it.
So could we ask our attorney whether in, you know, state law, there is a distinction to be made here, or do you have to consider any residential structure, no matter how many human beings who are inhabiting it, a multifamily? I mean, what do you, do, do we have something which is a commercial residential structure? Like an apartment building?
Like a rental property?
A rental property, an apartment building.
Those definitions really come from the village.
They come from the village.
We have the ability to define what's a rental property, what's commercial property, and so forth. So that's within our, the village board's purview today.
So I just, you know, for me, I want to be clear, because I've had a number of discussions about this already, and each of those discussions has given birth to more confusion.
And we, as you know, prior to the new administration, we've been working on changing definitions of rental properties and those types of things, and that can continue, and we can look at our definitions of commercial property. And if we have now, you just go to the definitions section quickly. 212-5, I believe, definitions. Let's see, we have with the commercial.
Or may I, may I just throw this out there? I, I feel like what would help is when there are residential properties that are being used for commercial purposes, that they would be considered a commercial property. That's kind of how I see.
Are you talking about a commercial enterprise, or just a cheap, by sheer number of people living there?
No, a commercial enterprise.
Like doing business?
Right.
No, not, not just doing business, but if the, if the ownership, if the primary reason for ownership of that property is for income generation, that's a commercial property.
That's my question. That's exactly, I want to know if that is enshrined anywhere, or if we need to define that.
And I think we...
I have a feeling that we need to define that.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have a definition in the zoning code per se of commercial property.
My, see, my understanding is that we have run into challenges within this village when we have single-family homes and two-family homes, and those are supposed to be considered residential. But what had, and because of that, what seems to have happened is that developers who are focused on income-generative properties build two-family homes, because they, they want to be considered a residential property, when they really are commercial properties.
Well, we need to, here we go, we need to talk about that, there's, the, the use that's going on at the place is still residential, it's a multifamily.
Well, I think that's, that's the whole reason of this discussion.
Exactly right, that's what, that's all I'm saying, you know, it's the difference between the commercial enterprise being operated by those occupying the residence, or occupying the building versus the owner of it, that's all I'm saying, but I hear where you're going with that.
Do you, maybe the difference between residential, residential, and commercial residential?
Yeah, I mean, it's really, and that's why we're moving towards defining rental property and those types of things, but absolutely.
So think about this, if you have a two-family house, which is clearly a two-family house, two entrances, two identifiable nuclear families living in there.
Traditional or non-traditional?
Traditional or non-traditional, but, you know, each of them sharing living space, cooking space, and so forth. And, but both of them are renting from a landlord, but it's clearly a two-family house, but both of them are rentals. Is that going to fit in what you've suggested is commercial?
I would view, I would view that as commercial residential, yes.
You would? I'm, I'm wondering if that, if there not, is not state legislation that...
That would supersede a...
That would supersede that, because the state has often talked about, and there have been many cases that have gone to trial about one family and two families, and what that means.
And the definition of...
And, and what that means. And I'm wondering whether a law that was so broadly written, that it would include what is clearly two families, living in a two-family structure, could be called commercial, rather than simply a two-family house.
We need to look at it.
Yeah.
We absolutely need to look at it, and be clear on whatever definitions we're going to come up with, if they're sustainable.
Right.
Because, you know, it's no point in defining terms that aren't going to jive with case law. It's just not going to, but we, but we, you do need, I understand where people are coming from, we have to, we have to look at it.
So the thought is we put that topic on some sort of comeback list? Is that how we do this? Great. Okay. Moving on to item 13, discussion of the request for relief from Richard Casano for new construction fees.
Can we go back for one second?
Yes.
On 11, we had in the memo from the planning board, you can lay my finger aside, they had requested some language, which I believe is underlined in their memo, to tweak 21223 a little bit.
Yes.
You have that?
Yeah.
Yeah. So...
But that's what we do not have on the agenda.
We do not have.
Right? Do you see that on the agenda, 21223?
Yeah, it's number 11.
It's 21213.
It's 21213, I thought they were talking about 21223.
I think that's why it was a little confusing before.
Yeah, that's what I got.
Yes. I think we were all a little confused.
Okay, so we have this memo, even though it's not on the agenda. Do you want to hold this over this memo, or do you want to direct me to potentially come up with some language? Amending what they're asking in this memo? What do you want to do?
I think we need to put this on a future agenda to, to discuss again, since it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, I...
If you could review it, we can table it until...
Yep, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
Yes, just actually looking, because I, it looks like I copied directly from Robyn's cover. Yes, of course, I would be happy to do as you would.
But we, we're not tabling it, because it's not on the agenda, right?
We're just deferring it for future, we're deferring it to future consideration.
Okay. So then we will continue with the next item, discussion of the request for relief from Richard Casano for new construction fees. May I have a motion to discuss this topic?
It's on the agenda.
No, we're, I'm sorry.
You just...
It's on the agenda.
Got it.
So let's discuss.
Tom, do you know if this is anything that has gone in front of the planning board?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, it seems like it's more conceptual than, than anything else. It's basically questioning the dollar amount or the practice of, of this new fee schedule. So without a specific project, I don't understand, I don't, I don't feel comfortable modifying the, the fee table that we just adopted in our reorg meeting.
And I would add to that, you know, with no disrespect to Mr. Casano or anybody else, if, for example, you're building 100 apartment units to sell, you know, there are fees associated with that, and $20,000, and, you know, $200 per unit is not an exorbitant is not an exorbitant sum of stretch. That's my personal opinion. I mean, there's places where the rec fees and other fees related to new construction are a bit higher than two hundred per unit.
Well, the rec fees might still be higher, you know, attached. There are other fees that would be attached to that. So I agree with you that the basic fee here at two hundred dollars per unit is not excessive. But are there other fees that are attached to this that would make it unlikely for somebody to develop?
Well, generally.
But also the rec fee had been three thousand dollars per lot and it was increased to seventy-five hundred dollars per lot. So you could have several units on a lot.
I use rec fee. He's talking about total fees that would be associated with each unit.
Each unit, yes. If you were to build an apartment complex with one hundred units, that was hypothetical.
That's just hypothetical. And in the big picture, you know, when you're selling these units for X dollars, it's, again, it's not an unreasonable expectation that you're going to be paying fees to the municipality for various things.
Now, with that, the bottom of the last paragraph mentions the possible alternative fee structure. And the only thing that I could think of in terms of if someone were, you know, hypothetically to be proposing a hundred small apartment units, that there could be, you know, the feasibility of having that developer be given sort of a payment plan or some sort of a timeline where X number of dollars are due at a certain, you know, point in the process, you know, where, say, be it, you know, the groundbreaking day, you'd need to have X number of dollars paid toward that development.
Would they have to prove some sort of hardship to receive that consideration?
That's how you write the code. You could create, you know, in the code when the fees are due. You could also do it that each one is payable when a CO for a unit is, you know, the final CO is ready to go. They can pay it then. You're not paying them all at once. There's different ways that you could do that.
If we were to change the existing code, because I believe the existing code does say when different fees are due. That's already included.
That's always something that can be adjusted if the board feels that's appropriate. You can always revisit these things. But, you know, if looking and suggesting an alternate fee structure in that district, that's really up to the board, whether the board feels, how the board feels about different fees. That's just who it is.
Yeah, I do also agree that two hundred per unit is not, you know, by any means unreasonable. And with my thought as to the alternative fee structure, we do want to encourage development in that corridor. And it's been such a long time coming for this, certainly over ten years. And I think that, you know, whatever we can do to move forward, this is something that would be of help to anyone who's looking to build.
Right, but by the same token, we don't, we don't know the appetite for development until, you know, that code is recently enacted. So we're beginning to see some interest in that corridor. So we really have no line in the sand to know whether the fees are high or low or appropriate.
And I think your point's well taken that there's no application right now. There's no, there's nothing that's being proposed. And are there times when, if there's a project that's of a particular benefit to the community, that fees are negotiable? There are always the notion. So someone's coming in with a project, I use an example, like the group occupations. Where occupations builds housing that's affordable for adults with special needs. And it's sort of an adult assisted living, not elderly, but adults who work, but they need assistance with everyday activities and getting to and from places and getting to and from work and getting around in their apartments if they have either physical or mental limitations. In projects like that, it's not uncommon, for example, because it's, there is such a benefit in the public and to the community that certain fees are negotiated with the developer and an agreement is reached with the developer before they start building, during the approval process. So that's always something that's on the table when a particular project comes before the planning board. And it would come to the village board if there's some sort of request for a fee agreement or a fee reduction. So those are things to keep in mind.
So is any action required here at the moment?
Yeah. Only if you want to change the village.
Only if we want to change it. So I suggest we move on to the next.
Take the letter under advisement. And in the future, if he or someone else is proposing a specific project to the planning board and issuing fees come up, it would be revisited by this board on a referral.
Sure.
Yeah, I think you just stated that perfectly. So we'll move on to the next item. Approval of a new agreement with capital markets advisors and a void of the agreement approved on May twenty-seventh.
One note.
The agreement was made and signed by the House Administration. And the USDA, who is helping to administer funds related to this, found the agreement not acceptable and a new agreement had to be made. So we have to void the original notice period and then authorize you to sign the second.
Where did we get the agreement from first place? Did they provide it to the village? Because I never saw it.
It was provided to me by the chairman.
Okay.
And I don't have any of the other details related to that.
Do you need to look at this further before we make a decision?
Well, if it's to do with capital markets advisors, I assume if there was going to be a problem with it, bond counsel would have said something. So what I would suggest is approve the new agreement subject to any revisions made, suggested by bond counsel or the village attorney. If somebody needs to send them my way, we'll look at it. But primarily bond counsel and the capital markets agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Mary of the call, if you're, you get to do that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of.
And then the next one, approval of a memo from Gene Turwilleger, DPW superintendent, to approve the lowest bidder for the sanitary sewer connection on eighteen Mill Rock, twelve North Oakwood, four North Oakwood and sixteen Grove Street. Any discussion?
Well, I move this in the hopes that we will finally have this off our agenda.
This is a new group. Last week we had four. This is a whole different group.
This is a different group.
Different group.
We don't want to see those streets and addresses for a while. I know that sounds a lot, but no. I, no, it's good to get this work done and, you know, it has been.
And it's going to the lowest bidder.
Yes.
Rebecca, would you second that, if I'm sorry?
Second, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So our final discussion topic relates to the proposed resolution prohibiting formula retail uses. So this is, this is draft legislation the previous board worked on. It had, it had been, the idea was to share it with the Ulster County Planning Board. But what we did is we pulled it back and did not have them review it because we wanted to take the temperature of this board to see whether we wanted to take that next step to have them review it and to get our input on the proposed legislation. So any thoughts?
I was and remain concerned that we not unintentionally prohibited the, the operation within the village of certain kinds of businesses altogether. I'm thinking particularly of STS, which was a store, if you want to know, a shop, actually, on thirty-two block before it burned down recently, which is part of a chain.
Right, so the proposed legislation just has to do with new entries into our village.
But it would stop us from having a shop like STS unless it's very carefully drawn.
Right. And I think the spirit of the proposed legislation is to support local businesses for a variety of reasons that were identified in the draft.
Granted. But in addition, STS, I believe, is an employee-owned business. So while it is a chain and there is a, you know, a home base for the chain, I suppose, in someplace in New Jersey. And while there are many more than six entities that are STS operations, several of which are within an hour's reach of here, I would see that as, if not a locally owned, but an employee-owned operation of a sort, that I would welcome within the village. Other than a Walmart or a Burger King or a similar.
And I feel like the proposed legislation provided room for unique situations, whether it's via the ZBA or some other stipulations that could be considered. So I think those concerns were identified and addressed.
That's my discussion. I want to be clear that that point is made and kept clear so that there can be a referral or there would be a referral to the ZBA rather than that there would be an automatic elimination of that.
I would say, not that there was a referral process, but it seemed like there was mechanisms that would allow special considerations and unique situations. So the spirit of this legislation would be to prohibit this, what is it called? The formula retail use for a variety of important reasons, but it wouldn't handcuff the village either. To stop all.
An appeal process.
Yeah. Rebecca was going to.
Sure. And also with that, you know, I feel like a natural next step is to send it to the county and get the county's opinion because, you know, when it comes back to us, that doesn't mean it's necessarily the end of the road with the legislation. So, you know, we can also, once we have the county's opinion, that could further inform our decision in what manner we adopt it. And if it's something that we would amend again or if it's something that we would adopt as is.
What do you think of Dennis?
There's been no public hearing.
As far as gauging temperature, I agree with the spirit of the law. The one thing that I would like to raise is in section two, five, under three, notwithstanding the foregoing, the term "formula retail use shall not include retail gasoline stations." I would just like additional clarification on whether that includes the retail portion of gasoline stations. A lot of gas stations, like Quick Checks, have full-scale sandwich shops within them and other retail businesses that are no relation to selling gas located on premises.
That's a great.
So is that exclusion going to carry over to those retail pieces inside their, you know, their mini-marts or what?
Mobile Island has a junk normalcy within it.
Junk normalcy.
I think that's a, that's a very interesting point that should somehow be considered in this draft. Do you think we should consider a modification to include Dennis's point before sending it to the county? Because I think that's actually a pretty important point.
It should be bulletproof before we send it off.
And the county already has it, but we can tweak it. Because what we also need to do, assuming we want to forward and send it to the county, I have to prepare a draft EAF anyway because the county needs that to complete their idea. So we can incorporate language.
You know, I think one, I think one way to deal with Dennis's point is to just exclude that exemption. So then the wiggle room, the gas station would have to pursue their site plan via the wiggle room that's already offered within, offered within the proposed legislation. So that, that I think, if it's a Quick Check who is creating a sandwich shop, you know, which is really their core business and the gas is kind of a, I think that would handle that. I would consider excluding that exemption for gas stations.
The only, do it anyway. The only thing I would raise there is that gas stations, unlike most other formula retail uses, are really more of a public convenience. That's the only reason we talked about gas stations last time. You know, rather than make it an independent operator going in with a gas station sometimes, and the sandwich shop and the subway and all, those points are very well taken. But a lot of times it's easier for the residents to.
I think you could, I think you could do it to identify the Quick Check concern. Where, let's say, you exclude the exemption for gas stations and then there's still wiggle room for gas stations to come into the village. But maybe during that appeal process, they could, they could receive admission to the village provided that their retail space is of X number of square feet or it's not, you know, there's somehow where, yes, it makes perfect sense that a gas station would have some sort of convenience store offerings as opposed to like a super-sized Quick Check style business. I think if you figure out the ratio of the size of the convenience store portion of their business, maybe that's a way to do that.
We have examples now.
Right.
Went to Main Street right now and you looked at the golf station there. There is a convenience store attached to that golf station, but it's entirely local. There's no character to it that is like cookie cutter character that.
It's not a formula.
It's not a formula.
But even the mobile is obviously a formula, but the footprint of their convenience store portion of their business model is much smaller or there's a ratio that makes sense with their gasoline.
I kind of feel also to that extent, if a gas station proposal did go in front of the planning board and there was an intent to include a formula business within that gas station, with this legislation, the planning board could reject the plan because it is going beyond the scope of a gas station and including a formula business.
But the planning, true, but if this legislation is passed and the gas station exemption is removed, they couldn't even go to the planning board. They'd have to go to the ZBA first.
Yes.
Because you wouldn't, if we knock out gas stations with or without a convenience store component, if it's not, essentially you're taking out a gas station as a permitted use unless it's an independent gas station.
Right. I don't really see any trouble with requiring them to go to the ZBA.
I'm just, all I'm saying is they would have to go first, the ZBA, before planning board. That's the only point I think, if you want to take out that exclusion.
I would not want to take out the, I like, and I want to congratulate Dennis on this notion. I don't want to take out the exclusion, but I want to, they qualify the exclusion by adding the, the presence on a site of, and let's even say, a large enough formula business to, you know, create a problem for local businesses. But because you've now introduced not just a gas station, but a gas station plus something else.
A gas station, a gas station plus, so like a Starbucks.
A Starbucks or something. There has to be a way for us to write.
Because that would be, that would, that would allow development that would really provide them with an out to kind of circle bend the spirit of this law. So I feel more. So I feel more comfortable actually removing that exemption.
I agree. Makes it tighter. They have to go through the ZBA rather than making guidelines that they could wiggle through and get around.
I just want to question this one more time, that we not make laws though that people don't understand. So if you're making a law that requires people to go through alternative routes before they get started, we want to make sure that it's very clearly formulated in the legislation so that we are not throwing obstacles in people's way before they even get started with them. Because we are looking for development, for example, in the B3 district. We want development.
Well, we already have a number of gas stations in the B3 district, for example.
We do, one of which...
Is a formula.
Anyhow, yeah, is a formula.
I know I'm not supposed to make comments, but I am on the ZBA. And so I would ask one question, and that is, if it's going to come to the ZBA, the ZBA doesn't make a decision just because they woke up this morning and made that decision. So somehow there would have to be some guidance, you know, that would guide the ZBA in reviewing it. So while I'm perfectly happy to act as the ZBA, and this just me, only my first time as ZBA, it's like perfectly happy to take on things like this, I can't imagine doing it without guidance. So that guidance has to come from someplace, whether it's in the lower half of the sun or...
Well, the discretionary review guidelines are in here for the ZBA.
But we still are making a decision, have to make a decision based on some...
I mean, this is, I'm definitely just brainstorming here, but I think that actually is a point well taken and I think it does make sense where we don't want to just create legislation where it feels opaque because we're trying to socially engineer something. We want the legislation to be useful too. So with that, I do think we could include the gas station exemption and possibly attach some detail saying, provided that the gas station's convenience store offering is of a certain size, and you could even compare it to the average square footage of all the existing gas stations in the village. It could be just store offerings from the existing gas station, so it's not some multiple of what already exists. So it remains within the spirit of our existing community. I'm just spit on.
A manner of crafting laws to protect the spirit of law.
Yes, and it's extremely difficult to do that while you're sitting here.
Yes.
What you want to do is have, well, look at this and feed us with some suggestions...
Or tweak this a little bit with Dennis's comments and try and craft something that are just so unclear. Are we leaving in the gas station exemption and modifying it to sort of knock out any formula uses within the gas station's...
And so for convenience stores and ancillary convenience stores that are of an outsized...
Would if we say that any gas stations that have a retail attachment to it, that has to be considered separately than the gas station?
Well...
Well, doesn't every gas station have a convenience store offering?
Not in that, I mean, these days, yes, but not...
Well, sometimes the gas station, you have a landlord and sometimes the gas station is leased to an operating company and someone else, independent of the gas station, is leasing the mini-mart. So that has to be considered as well. But they've done leases like the...
Much like mechanics that are attached to gas stations and are always the same owner. But wouldn't that all be identified in site plan?
It would all be in the site plan, but before you're...
Before they ever get to site...
Before you get to site plan, in the scenario we're creating here, they're looking for an exemption for something on the property, they'd have to go to the ZBA anyway. If we're keeping gas station with convenience store, if it's just a gas station, you really have two things. If it's, you know, some gas stations don't have a full-blown mini-mart. Most of them.
I think nearly all have some mini-mart offerings.
Yes.
At least chewing tobacco.
And oil.
So we'll change this to put in the, you know, make sure the formula components can't be present in the mini-mart or the connected on-the-site store. Because that's what you got to get.
Gas line?
Yes. All right, so let me do a little shuffling with it. Excluded formula uses on gas station site. Ellen, to address your comment, right now, as it's written, there are some discretionary review guidelines that the ZBA is required to file.
And that would apply.
Yes, that would apply. They're in here.
So you're...
I asked for a clarification. Is it your intent that this law would go forward for review of the district planning work in July?
Assuming that we get a draft back and we talk about it at our next meeting.
That would be enough time?
It would not be enough time if our next meeting's on 6/24.
They, I believe, would need to have it earlier that week for consideration for the July meeting. They require just a week, if not two weeks.
Is the fear that if they don't review it July, it gets kicked into...
They only meet once a month. And that's why I'm asking, or do you need to have a special agreement just for the purposes of requiring? I just want to be consistent.
I'm fine, you know, not rushing anything. So we will discuss this again on 6/24 and when we're ready to send it or ask the county planning board to review it, they will review it at their next meeting.
With the EAF.
With the EAF. So we can adjourn and then go into executive session?
No, we can go into executive session. I would just say, very briefly, in executive session, some of the stuff with Pat and Flo we can talk about out here, but I just want to talk to the board for a few minutes in executive and then we can resume some of the discussion out here if you wish. Or not.
What do we say the purpose is?
To consult with council. Then we have to come back out of adjourned, if we do it all in there, we have to come back out of adjourned meeting anyway.
Right. I'll make a motion to enter executive session to confer with council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.